All right, let's start. So, thank you all for joining us today as we represent the LBJ Early College Community. We have several of our staff members here. And I think we have some participants who are still logging on. I'm looking at the bottom of the screen and thank you all for being here with us. Without further ado, I'll go ahead and introduce our panelists that we have representing our campus. I'm Mr. Bailey, Principal of LBJ Early College High School. We have Ms. King, our Early College Coordinator. We have Ms. Perriman, our Sped Department Lead. We have one of our system principals, Ms. Sales, with us. We have our lead counselor, Dr. Baker. We have with us one of our system principals, Mr. Law. We have one of our awesome teachers, representing Advanced Academics, Ms. Rodriguez. We also have our project specialist and one of the advocates for the LBJ Early College Community, Mr. Fletcher. We have our Academy Director, Ms. Noggle. We have one of our Fine Arts Directors, Mr. East. We have one of our awesome teachers who focus with the Delta and supporting students, Mr. Gordon. We have our Parent Support Specialist, Ms. Brown. Our Athletics Director, Mr. Fenner. One of our counselors, Mr. Garcia. We have one of our teachers and also one of our instructional coaches, Ms. Shorter. And then we have one of our CTE teachers, our Health Professionals Lead, Ms. Jackson, also our cheer sponsor. Then we have one of our department leaders for English, Ms. Smith. And then we have our CTE Department Lead, Ms. Forte, joining us. So, at this time, we're going to go ahead and engage with the agenda that we have. Towards the end of the session, we'll have an opportunity to allow all of our participants to participate in a Q and A. But at this time, we're going to go ahead and engage with the agenda and hopefully answer a lot of the questions that you would like to hear about. So first is, I'm going to explain to you all, we had to look at three different phases. Three phases beginning with making sure during this pandemic that our students were safe. Also focused on the social and emotional aspect of it. We're in the middle of a pandemic. It was unexpected that we were not going to be allowed to continue school the way we traditionally did. And so we had to make sure we didn't move too fast and try to make sure that we support all of our students, our family members, and our staff members as well and kind of focus on the social and emotional. The first thing that we wanted to do was make sure that our staff members and our families felt connected to the school. We have our campus website and we also have our Jackson to Move Blend Course, which highlights several components of the school to keep our students and our family members fully informed. We also encourage our staff members to visit our campus website, which has updated information pertaining to events and programs and how we're connecting with our families. And we also have our weekly newsletters that are posted on our campus website. In addition to that, we try to really explore and make sure we use our social media pages, our Facebook page, our Twitter page, and our Instagram page. We fully understand that parents and families have different resources and how they like to connect with the campus. And so we tried to create multiple resources of how we connect with the campuses to make sure that they're staying connected. And also, we wanted to make sure that our families were safe. Now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Baker and Mr. Garcia, our counselors, to talk about some of these social and emotional learning sessions that we have for our students as they get acclimated to the distant learning.
Okay, hello, parents. One thing I wanted to say before we, you know, go in and talk about the different lessons is that the goal of teaching social and emotional support during this time is to help our students build mental health and resilience so that they can adapt to this new environment and help them to handle what's going on now. So each week, we will be offering a 30-minute session on a topic related to a specific skill. So like, for example, this first week where the skill targeted is time management. And so there will be a session each week. And each week, a grade-level counselor will host a meeting where the students can engage.
Yes, and as Dr. Baker just explained, basically, the purpose is basically to help students to cope with this new situation. This is a difficult situation for everybody concerned, but especially for our young people, for our teenagers. So we want to give them the tools to be able to handle this uncomfortable situation as best as possible. So as Dr. Baker mentioned, each week, we're going to have a weekly team. And basically, each of the presenters each day is going to present the team. And after that, we're also going to give the students the opportunity to share their emotions, to share, to ask any questions, whether they are concerned on how to deal with the pandemic, whether there are more of the academic circumstances they have, how can we support them? So basically, both from an emotional and academic point of view, that's the idea for us to be holding these social and emotional learning sessions. They're going to be happening every day, Monday to Friday. Please look on the newsletter, the community newsletter. It's going to be announced each week, the team that we're going to cover for that particular week and the time each day that you can log in to participate. So we encourage you and we ask you to encourage your students to participate in these sessions so that they can feel that they're not alone, that we'll be able to get through this together. So that's the idea of this social and emotional lessons.
Thank you, counselors. I also want to add to that piece. Even us at the campus level, we're still trying to get acclimated mentally and emotionally with the fact that we can't see our kids. There's so many things that we took for granted during this time, such as being able to just walk down the hallway, go inside the cafeteria, go inside the classroom, stop by one of our staff members, you know, just stop one of the students and be able to speak to them. And that is, we're not able to communicate in that level. And so we're still trying to emotionally make sure that we're taking care of ourselves, taking care of our families, but also making sure that we are able to reach out to our students and figure out different ways of still remaining connected with our students and families despite the fact that we can't do it in person, which is our preference. So the first phase, again, was to focus on our staff members and families' safety and then making sure that we'll focus on the emotional aspect of it, which is going to continuously be an ongoing focus and an ongoing challenge as we support each other and make sure that we truly are a Jaguar family. The next phase is now looking at getting connected. Making sure that our family members have the resources that they need to support their students during the distant learning. And so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Brown, our Parent Support Specialist, and as well as Ms. Sales, my administrator that leads the outreach team, to talk about how's LBJ reaching out to parents, but not only reaching out, making sure that our parents and our families have the resources that they need as we work together.
Good evening, everyone. Once we heard from Austin ISD that our schools were going to be closed for the traditional learning platform and going to distance learning, we formed what is known as the LBJ Outreach Team. Our first goal of the outreach team was to get in contact with all of our students to make sure that they had all the technology they needed in order to participate in this distance learning. And then we also wanted to make sure that they had all the resources they need. For example, the food, food distribution. And so what we did is we sent to each family at LBJ, we sent them a family needs assessment. So families either filled out the survey from their emails or someone from the outreach team, which could have been a counselor, a teacher, an administration. One of us called and we personally talked to the families and we filled out the needs assessment with them. We then compiled all of that information. And on April 6th, any student that was identified as needing a meeting technology, we had a LBJ Distribution Day. And then from there, any family, after that, any family that was unable to pick up their technology on that day, we directed, we took all those names, we compiled them, and we gave them to the Austin ISD Technology Department. If you are a student or a family member who, or even faculty and staff, that's open to faculty and staff, and you can't, like, there's something wrong with your technology, you can go to Austin ISD Computer Curbside. It's open Monday through Friday, starting at 9:00 a.m. The location nearest to our LBJ campus is the Austin ISD Performing Arts Center. If the curbside, if you don't have the opportunity to go to curbside, students can also call the Student Support Hotline. That number is 512-414-4357. And then there's also a hotline that is available for parents if they need additional information on technology or different resources. And that number is 512-414-4357. At this time, I am, we have reached out of our 779 students, we have been able to make contact with eight of them. I mean, sorry, we made contact with all but eight of them. And we are in the process of still trying to reach those families either by email, phone call, postcards, and different avenues. So we're contacting weekly all of our families and this is going to be our ongoing process even past this pandemic. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Ms. Sales.
You're welcome.
Right before Ms. Brown presents, the reason why we talked about we have about eight families that we're still trying to reach. One thing I want to highlight is normally before the pandemic, the emphasis will be focused on sending out the communication. And then if we get a response, that was good. And if we didn't get a response, we probably didn't focus on that piece as much. So it's kind of a one-sided communication. The campus is communicating to the community. Now with the transition that we're in, it's more emphasis put on both. We need a dual communication. Campus is sending out this information, but we need to make sure that we are getting some type of response from our families. So we have various staff members that are reaching out as we work on, but we put a lot of emphasis, when we look at all of our students of our families, who did we not get a response from in some way, you know, some type of fashion? And so we make sure that we keep in close track of that and not only just doing one reach out of communications, reaching out to our families multiple times each week as we progress through this. So as we focus on supporting our families, I want to turn it over to Ms. Brown, our Parent Support Specialist, to share some of the resources that are there available.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. We have a quick link guide to all our communities and resources in our area. And this, on this fly, on this app, if you click on food, it'll take you to food and it'll take you to all the different shelters, all the different communities or resources or anyone that's giving out any type of food in our area. So whichever, whatever you think you might need support with, help with, we even have other services on here as well. As if you need mental health or if you having issues, you having a toothache, if you're having anything, this is our resource guide and it's up to date. So once something falls off, something else is added on to be in place. So to always stay current. If you need financial assistance, it's a financial resource link on there where you can go. It'll tell you what you have to do, the process, the procedures to get those financial assistance. At the bottom, you have your 2-on-1. If you don't know something, if something's not on here in detail, if you can't get in touch with us, 2-on-1, I have all the information as well. Go to our community work centers, Loyola, Turner-Roberts, all the ones in our community, we're here to serve you, we're here to help you. We have CIS, they're giving out gift cards. They're not paying any financial at this time, but they are helping out with gift cards and other little things like that for the homes that they can mail out. Our FRC is also having, they're giving away foods as well. There's a list on here to where the next FRC donation site to pick up food and to donate food. And also tomorrow, they're having another food drive through. It's going to be at Eastside Memorial tomorrow from 9:00 to 11:00.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, for sharing that information. Again, family members, anything that we share with you during this time will be found on our website. And also, if you visit our Jackson to Move Blend Course, which is also featured on our campus website, LBJ ECHS@austinisd.org. So we want to make sure that we continuously make this information available. And each week, we will make sure that this is submitted to you in our community newsletter as well. So now we had a chance to talk about the first two phases. First phase was about safety with the COVID-19. Are our families safe, are our students safe, are our staff members safe? And how are we dealing with the emotionally as we transition? The second phase was about resources. We have to get our parents and students the resources that they need during this time as we focus on instruction. Now we're up to Phase 3. Phase 3 is distant continuous learning. Having all of our students learn at home. That's a challenge in itself. Even as staff member, even as a principal, and I have my awesome team members with me, we're trying to conduct business differently. You know, how we were teaching and leading on campus is completely different than what we're doing right now. But what we have done is realized, we got to step up. You want to know why? Because our families and students deserve nothing less than that. So what I mean by step up is we try to learn new experiences, new websites, new virtual platforms that we can use, have a different mindset on how we approach the things that we do to support our students and our families. And so that's what our staff members are doing. We're trying to learn and transform the way we educate our students and our families. And each of us represented right now has had to, at one minute, we've been a teacher, another minute, we're trying to act as a counselor, another minute, we're the administrator of the course, another minute, we're just trying to be anything that the parents and the students need from us. And that's the commitment that we have for LBJ. Now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Noggle, our Academy Director, to talk more specifically about the virtual learning process that we have, grading policy, and then we'll have some of our teachers share out about our blend courses. Ms. Noggle will share with us our master schedule virtually.
Sorry, I was talking and didn't have my microphone on. Thank you all for joining us. I do want to just say, reiterate what Mr. Bailey was saying, that we're all learning as we go through this and how to adapt to a virtual online learning and continuous learning. And I think what we've all learned is that school is really not necessarily about the content and the curriculum, it's really about relationships. And I can tell you that we're all missing the relationships that we have with students. And so when we created this schedule, really understanding that there definitely needed to be flexible because students and home lives are all very different and challenging in different ways. And so what we wanted to do is to provide some kind of structure for students as a guide for them because they no longer have a teacher directing their lesson. They're really having to be self-motivated and self-directed. And so we created this schedule as a suggestion for how students can structure the day, knowing that in the morning and the afternoon, we wanted to have flex time for students and teachers to meet on a more individual basis, either through tutorials or small groups. And so that morning and afternoon flex time is really arranged, would be similar to morning tutorials and afternoon tutorials if we were in the regular school day. If you look in the middle where you see these periods, these kind of represent our block schedule that we had before with four periods a day. Not, definitely not the whole 40, 90 minutes like they were before, but a more condensed shortened time period. And these are kind of really designed for students and teachers to meet as a whole class. So we do have some teachers that are hosting virtual class meetings and times for their students to meet. And so that's what this schedule is like. With Friday really being a flex time for teachers to engage in professional learning, for faculty meetings, other kind of meetings that we have like that. So we just wanted to kind of reiterate that. When we talk about our grading policy, the school board did approve a new grading policy due to the situation that we are in. And it kind of breaks it up into two separate time periods. What happened prior to spring break, which for us, we did release on March 12th. So any grading before March 13th, which was the last day that we supposed to be for spring break. And then what happens when we return from school? And so what happened with the school board approved is that any grades and assignments prior to May to March 12th are now going to be combined into one 10-week grading period. No new assignments, graded assignments will be added into the grade book. And students will receive either a P, meaning they passed, and the teacher has said that they have mastered that content for that course and they get a P, or they get an I, which is incomplete. And so that's what will show up on their transcripts and on their report cards for the spring semester. And so that's kind of how we've been, the assignments that are moving forward, if teachers are continuous to engage in continuous learning activities, those grades will be entered into Blend. That's why we keep reiterating, reiterating to families and for students to log into Blend, make sure that they're connecting with their teachers through that platform because that's how students and parents will be getting feedback on how their child is doing moving forward. Again, making sure that those grades will not be calculated into their GPA or have, or show up as a numerical grade on their report card for the spring semester. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood those two separate time periods.
Thank you, Ms. Noggle. And the parents and students as well who are joining us, it's imperative that we have a good level of understanding about the grading policy. During the middle of a pandemic, the last thing we want to see happen is our students don't have an opportunity to recover credits or get the credits that they need and be able to move forward. And so we are making sure at the campus level that we are aligned with the district's revised grading policy during this time. And we put a high level of focus on greater recovery. So what classes the students failed in the fall semester and the four, six weeks, and give an opportunity for those students to recover credit if they failed that course. Everything after March 12th, once the pandemic started, is about pass or incomplete. So the spring semester, again, like Ms. Noggle stated, is a 10-week period. A kid will either receive a P, which means they're proficient in passing, or an I, which is incomplete. We're committed to make sure that we don't want any of our students to be, we don't want any of our students to have a punitive impact during this time of a pandemic. And so we're doing everything that we can to make sure that our students are engaging with their teachers during the Blend platform and able to recover their credits. The structure that's there for the virtual class, some parents and some students who we've spoken with and I've spoken with directly said, "Mr. Bailey, I'm struggling. We're just trying to, I'm just so used to having my teacher in front of me. I'm used to having a teacher in front of me helping with my lessons. I'm used to the bell schedule, so I know I can have this much time left in class or I know I have this much time left at the school day and I'm struggling with just not having that structure at home that I had at school." Based on some of the conversations with the multiple staff members, some of our parents are struggling with that as well and we're asking for support on just creating a structure for their child at home as they engage on the Blend courses. And so it's a learning curve for all of us. We're committed, we're going to continue supporting our students and working with our parents as we ensure that our students are able to still thrive with their credits during this time. Now, we talked about the grading policy. We talked about the virtual master schedule, just to create structure. Now let's talk about, from the student's perspective, what does that look like in terms of the distant learning on the Blend course? And so I have Ms. Smith, who will take us through what some of the courses look like that our students are engaged in.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alex Smith. I teach English and I'm the English Department Chair. I'm going to quickly go through how to access Blend and then I'm going to show the Blend course. So the way that you can access Blend is through the portal. And so you'll go to portal.austinisd.org. Once your student signs in with their student ID number, it will take them to the dashboard, which can look something like this. And Blend can be found on this page. So here, here is Blend. And we're going to sit. I'm on the student view, so give me a second. It'll look a little different. So here is what your student will see when it comes to the Blend page. So there are announcements. This is the place where teachers are putting the information that we're receiving from the campus as well as from the district. On the side, it'll give them the assignments that they can be working on. The most important place, however, is modules. And so for English 1 and for the English Department and for most departments, the module section is broken up into two sections. So there's the online learning, which is what Mr. Bailey was discussing, Ms. Noggle were discussing, that is the pass fail. And so this is the place where students can get their work. And so usually they'll go through. It'll have some type of directive. It'll have assignments. And most of the assignments will just be, are you interacting? It'll have some information, just kind of depending on who the teacher is and what the student is working on. Students will also find within these modules options for credit recovery. So for English 1, we have it set up where there is a letter that we ask for students to read before they begin just to make sure that they know what they should be working on. And then what appears at this moment to be inaccessible requires for students to go back to the prerequisite and make sure that they've read and done the work before they can begin. So they'll read this page for English 1 and then it'll allow them to actually start the recrater recovery process. And so depending on what classes your student needs, this page will look a little different. This is just the one that we use for English 1. But for the most part, learning should be kind of broken up into two parts. So we have the online learning, which is our new digital learning that we're doing through our Blend. And then there is the credit recovery modules that teachers might have and they may look different, but these are what we are using in the English 1 classes at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. So again, when we talk about the virtual schedule, that's there for structure. We know our students and really don't even expect our students to follow that schedule verbatim. We understand that it's flexible, it's chunk. That schedule is there for a couple of reasons. We have some students who are recovering credit for multiple classes. We also use that schedule to allow the staff to facilitate instruction and try to break it up to make sure that we don't have our students trying to do too many things at the same time. And so again, the virtual schedule is just there for structure, a lot of flexibility. The big goal is, we want to make sure that our students are connected with their teachers, that our students are able to engage in the courses that they need to recover credit for, that they are aware what credits they need to recover from the fall semester, the four, six weeks, and that they are able to engage and progress forward during this time. That's one of our primary focuses outside of safety, is helping our students stay on track with their graduation requirements. I'll have Ms. Noggle to talk about new assignments and make sure we have some clarification around that.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Yeah, we did have a question come through about whether students can be given new assignments. And our focus, as Mr. Bailey has said, is making sure that students are on track to graduate. So primaries, students are focusing on grade recovery for the fall and then also for that 10-week grading period. However, we do understand that there are students that are passing everything. They may be on track, they're passing everything and they're still reaching out to their teachers saying, "What can I do to help?" And so it is the expectation that students are, continues to engage and be given learning opportunities. The district has their own virtual learning, continuous learning assignments and as well as teachers are creating their own. However, these are not going to be counted as a grade. So no grades will be given and not updated to that 10-week period before March 13th, nor can new assignments be given for the fall. So the only new assignments that would be counted, any assignments that would be counted for a grade are those previously assigned and given for students that had failed a course for the semester, for the marking period. Again, students should be prioritizing if they're not passing their classes for the fall or the 10 weeks. That should be their priority, is working on previously assigned work to make sure they're getting that credit. If they're passing everything, then we do encourage them to reach out to their teacher, continue to engage in continuous learning. I know Ms. Rodriguez will talk a little bit later about our advanced placement classes and those courses because those exams are still taking place. And so I did want to just make sure that we understood the expectation around grading.
Thank you, Ms. Noggle. Now I'm going to have Ms. Rodriguez, one of our teachers, to talk to our attendees about advanced placement in those exams. Ms. Rodriguez?
My internet went out, but it's back. Okay. I'm, I'm going to talk about the AP test. Hi, everyone. AP tests are still happening. The dates for those will be May 11th through May 22nd. And the college board, the people that designed the exams and give them out have chosen specific times. So make sure students and families check with college board and your AP teacher about that specific time. So the AP test will be online and they're always timed and that rule is still in place. However, they have modified the, like, the test question to be a free response. So they got rid of, like, multiple choice questions. And they are also adjusting the question to fit material that was covered from, like, August to March 12th, before a lot of people went on spring break. I speak for all of the AP teachers that we still want our kids to take the exams. A lot of the colleges and universities are aware of everything that's happening. And they are going to accept a lot of the scores that are given out for the students that take the exams. College Board also has a lot of review sessions for each subject that is tested, as, as well as all of the teachers at LBJ. Will have review sessions for the students.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. So we talked about our students and their AP exams. Let's also talk about, we want to try to cover all of our students at both, on both ends of the spectrum. So now I'm gonna have Ms. Paramon share with us, what are we doing to help some of our students during this time with disabilities and some of our SPED students? Because even though we are not in campus, we're still remaining innovative. And we want to sure, we do, we want to make sure that we do every ca, everything that we can to support our students and meet them where they are during this time as we progress forward. So I'm, I have Ms. Paramon share with us about some of the SPED support that we're providing our students.
Good evening. The SPED team is supporting the campus to make sure that our students who are receiving services are getting their services met by working closely with our gen ed teachers to ensure that they are receiving their accommodations. Case managers and teachers and everybody on the department is reaching out to the teachers to ensure, to ensure that our kiddos are receiving those accommodations. Case managers are also in contact with parents to make sure if their parents have any type of concerns about how kids are to, to be involved with the modules in blend, to help to assist them with those processes as well. The campus is also, the SPED department is also still having our meetings. Our meetings are still being held, standing compliance according to state, since they are legal binding documents. So we're making sure that we're in compliance that way. Also working with the middle schools, doing advancements arts for those eighth graders who will be attending LBJ next year. So we're in constant communication with the middle schools for those kiddos. And finally, we are preparing our seniors for those graduation art meetings, for those seniors who are about to graduate. So the SPED team is definitely supporting the campus in those areas.
Thank you. So we're still providing support academically. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Gordon to talk, to share with you, what are we doing with some of our students in Delta as they recover credit as well?
So in Delta, we have two groups of students that we work with, understanding that Delta, what we're trying to do right now is we're trying to recover credits that they, that they failed in the past. And so the two groups that you work with in Delta, you have the 10th and 11th graders, then you have seniors. First to 10th and 11th graders, they know how to log in, they know how to access Delta, then, and they know how to email me if they have any questions. They log in, they, they do their work from home. They don't necessarily have a deadline, even though I want them to finish it by May 26th. The 10th and 11th graders don't necessarily have a deadline to complete it, but many of them are getting it done, which I'm very proud of. Now with the seniors, we have some deadlines to meet with the seniors, so the seniors are kind of handled a little bit different. Those seniors have to complete those, those classes if they fail in order to meet their graduation requirements. So I've been in contact with, with all of the seniors that are in Delta. They know how to get in touch with me personally. Each one of them has a goal, depending on how many classes that they have. Some people, some have one, some have three, some have six classes to complete. The goal that I want them to complete is by May 1st. And the reason why I want them to complete that by May 1st, it's easier for me and Dr. Baker and Ms., and Mr. Law and Ms. Nagle to get everything entered in and to get that done. It makes it a whole lot easier, just in case something comes up prior to graduation. Even though the date that they, that we want everything done is by the 26th. So the kids, they know how to log in, they know how to get in contact with me, they know how, they know how to request assistance. And the great part about this is the classes are, if they just log in and start them, they can finish the classes fairly quickly. They've been, they've been modified, considering the situation that we're in. And they're modified to help them and also learn, but to help them get graduated. And so all they gotta do is log in, get it done, get it started. If they have any questions, they know how to get in contact with me, and I'm in full support of them getting that done. And, and I think that's it. If you have any questions, again, just shoot me an email about Delta and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. So now let's talk about our seniors. When we look at this, what's going on right now, for me personally, one of the groups that I think mostly about is our seniors. You know, I've shared on a personal level with my family members and friends. Man, it's just a lot that you just don't get with your senior year. Senior year is very special. When you look at prom, you're looking at graduation, you're looking at memories and end of the year activities. I've graduated from college. I have participated in various awards and things like that, but nothing compares to the senior year. Just the momentum and experience that you have with our seniors. And so for the class of 2020, they are close to our heart as a campus with the Jaguar family. And we're trying to make sure that we create memories for these students, as well as ensure that they are on track to graduate and receive their high school diploma. So now I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Law, who's gonna talk to us about our seniors and representing as one of our system principals and working closely with our cohort of students.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, and good evening to our students and families and to our seniors and families. We just want you to know that we do understand and feel your heartache. When we went on our spring break, none of us ever could have expected that we would not be going back to complete this school year at the campus. And so I've talked to some, emailed others, and the feelings are deep. The, the, there's, there's deep emotion about that. And I want to say one positive aspect to that is that every single one of our seniors can graduate at this point. If you can find anything positive in that, because we know that some of our seniors, before we got out, they were kind of at that point where, man, I'm not going to graduate. I need too many EOCs to make up. I need too many credits. And at this point, the state has given us a gift to where we can graduate all of our seniors. And we just, and we've reached out to all of them. We just need for our seniors to reach back, those ones who are kind of dragging their feet. And, and I understand that because some that I talk to are working more hours to make money to help support their families. And we just need, as Mr. Gordon has stated, we would like for you to be finished May 1st, so that you can focus on working and doing those other things and preparing yourself for college and whatever else you have planned. So just stay motivated, stay encouraged, and you can reach out to us. You have our email addresses. Reach out to your counselors. But most of all, if you have not done so, get started on your work. Email your teachers. If you need their email addresses and can't find it, you can always call our main number, the 2543 number, and someone will answer and get you the information that you need to reach out to your teachers. And again, just stay focused, and we love each and every one of you for our 9th through 11th grade. It's also an opportunity for you to get caught up and start a fresh year, caught up and ready to move forward. So keep your heads up and let us know if you need anything from us.
So also with our seniors, we talked about what we want our seniors to do, but I have a committee at the campus. And we meet weekly and we focus on senior by senior. We have a report of every single senior on our roster, and we're looking at the number of credits that are in the system and making sure that these students are on track to graduate. If a student is not on track to graduate, then that's question during that meeting is what we doing about it? And so then as a committee, we hold ourselves accountable and we reach out to those families. And then not only that, we're talking directly to the seniors who are not on contract to make sure that they fully understand what we need them to do to ensure that they're able to receive this diploma. So let's talk about, so we're committed to making sure our seniors graduate. Let's talk about the commencement. So with that piece, with the commencement aspect of it, the district has shared with us the new graduation date for LBJ. Here's the schedule of all the high schools. And LBJ's commencement ceremony is August 13th at 10 o'clock with LBJ in Lawson. That's what it is currently, and we're hoping nothing changed during that time. We are also working with the district and trying to create, I think, a virtual graduation that was shared. And that'll take some place, that'll take, take place in June. We don't have a specific date yet. The campus is fully aligned with the district, and we're making sure we don't go too fast. And so that communication will be shared with our seniors, with our families, on the virtual graduation, and honestly, what that actually means and what that entails. And so outside of the seniors graduating, receiving the diploma, having a commencement, having a virtual graduation, we're still trying to be creative and innovative. And so I challenge the campus to think about, what are some ways that we can try to create memories virtually for our students? And so the prom was one of the biggest things that has come up. You know, our seniors are missing out on prom. And so now I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Fletcher, so we could talk about trying to create like a virtual prom. One thing I share with the staff is, when we think about these type of events, it's, it's hard to have a vision of what it's going to entail, because we're being innovative and we hadn't done this before. So we want to make it sure that it appeals to the students, and that is something that they truly want to participate in. And so we have met with some of our students and still working on different ways to create some of these memories. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Fletcher.
Good evening, everyone. And I'm glad everyone is here to be a part of this, this exciting time right now for us as far as getting out and reaching out to the community, because that's one of the things that we've been focusing on, and Mr. Bailey's been focusing on, is because of what's going on, we still have to be able to reach our community, our parents, and people who really appreciate what, that attend LBJ also or are alumni. So the prom, again, it's something new that we, we have put together. You know, it's something that's out there that, you know, we've heard about all this virtual stuff going on in our society and, and our kids. I mean, they have, many of them have worked their butt off to, to graduate. And they're missing out on one of those big, big events that usually takes place every year, no matter what. It's always prom. Students getting prepared for their, buying their outfits, the dates, you know, just everything that goes along with that prom. So one of the things that we're doing, we came up with is to have a virtual prom where with the support of KZI 88.7, they're providing a DJ for us. We are putting together a prom where students can actually be at their house, dress up, and get a, get, get the feel of maybe just having a, a prom or a party to celebrate what they have done for the last four years. And so we've come up with a prom, and we're gonna have a prom where it includes, again, a DJ. We're gonna have different rooms where students can listen to a variety of musics, music. We're gonna have different type of contests, like students are gonna have, get the opportunity to vote on, you know, best, best dress. They're gonna have to get an opportunity. They're gonna have even a contest about their pet. They're gonna have a contest in regards to their environment during this epidemic. And so, you know, again, this is something that we're trying to be innovative at. And one of the things that, in, in going forward, again, we're, we're being more reactive right now, because this was a surprise to everybody. But I guarantee you going forward, for the next years, for the years to come, we're gonna be prepared for everything, for anything like that that'll come around, because we're gonna make sure our parents, our, our community, our teachers, and everybody's gonna be trained and prepared for anything else like this to come, that, that comes around. And in this prom, we're gonna make sure this happens, it's gonna occur May the 2nd. It's, it's an event that we're reaching out, we're gonna be reaching out to all the students to make sure they are a part of this.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. In addition to try to make sure that we connect with our seniors, we also have a virtual college fair. And I have Ms. Nagle share with us about our virtual college fair.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. We know that, you know, seniors are getting prepared, making their final decisions. Decision Day is coming up. For juniors, this is a time when they really start, you know, planning their college visits, what applicant, you know, what colleges they want to apply for. And so there is a virtual college exploration week. It started yesterday and it runs this week. This is on our, our newsletter, where you can see the schedule. It's free. Lots of colleges are going to be attending. And so this is an opportunity, probably even more so when we had an actual physical college fair, there'll be a lot more colleges that are participating that students can learn about and have, and still have that same experience. The priority is for juniors, because those are the ones that are gonna start making their decisions when they return in the fall. But it's open to all grade levels. So we do encourage students and parents to have their students attend.
Thank you, Ms. Nagle. Now we also want to have Ms. King, who is our early college coordinator, to talk about what are we doing with our students that are early college and sharing some additional information with you all as well.
Hello, everyone. It's great to virtually see all of you. And yes, my name is Natalie King-Milatello, and I've been running the program at LBJ since 2015, very happily. What is the early college program? Just in a nutshell, if you're not familiar, it's a program that we offer our incoming Jaguars, really any grade level of Jaguar, that an incoming Jaguar in ninth grade can begin taking ACC classes and keep going all the way to their senior year, completely free, no cost to the family at all whatsoever. And the goal being at the end of their senior year, that they receive their associate's degree from ACC, along with their high school diplomas, which is an incredible opportunity. And you can navigate to our website. Mr. Bailey has it up right there. Click Apply for ECHS Here. And you can apply, and I'll respond to you right away. And in terms of what we're doing during this pandemic, so ACC moved online on March 30th. So the week before that, I kind of assessed the needs of all the early college kiddos, and I found out who needed laptops, hotspots, and I did curbside deliveries all around the city to make sure everyone had what they needed. And after they began, I immediately got in contact with all the professors. I have kind of an advantage, because I've been using Remind with the kids since 2015. So I have a really robust Remind presence, a lot of parents on there too. So that kind of worked really well for this. And in addition, again, talking to all the professors, and they have a direct link to me, the kids and the professors and the parents. And so I've been on Zoom meetings. I have a virtual early college Zoom room, where kids can pop in and out as if we're still in school. So that's been hugely helpful for us. And we also have, all the LBJ teachers have signed up to be mentors for our early college kids. So we're getting wraparound services for these kiddos, as well as UT has adopted our AA candidates. So they're getting additional support there. And API, Austin Partners in Education, has adopted our EDUC kiddos, which is a first class that the kids take in the program. So we're really trying to make sure that they're embraced all the way around, full circle, full stop.
Thank you, Ms. King. So we're gonna reserve the rest of the meeting for a Q and A. Well, right before we go into our Q and A session, we want to hear from our extracurriculars. So our athletics, fine arts, and CTE. And so I'm gonna have these staff members share out some of the bigger programs that we have at LBJ Early College High School. So I'm gonna have Mr. Fenner share out with us some updates with athletics.
Good evening. On the athletic side, if you haven't heard yet, so athletics has been canceled. UIL has canceled in practices for the rest of the spring semester. So we know that's a tough thing for our student athletes. They invest so much time in preparation, and it's a big part of their high school experience. And so our primary focus as coaches are to stay connected with our student athletes. We spend so much time with them. And this, this, you know, and so this, there's all the other programs, we're connecting with our student athletes. And it's our number one priority is to be able to see them. And so I know a lot of our programs are hosting Zoom meetings, and we're doing physical fitness workouts. And it's the equipment that they can access, and a lot of it is just body workouts, where they can focus on just their, their own body movements. And so moving forward, we really want to keep our kids together, make programs with the family. And make sure they're taking care of their, their business.
Thank you, Mr. Coach Fenner. Now we'll move on to fine arts. Mr. East?
Hi, everybody. So
Hi, everybody, so yes, the fine arts are still participating, especially the, um. One of the things to point out is the performing groups like dance and orchestra or band or choir. Those students are still meeting their classes through Zoom meetings online and they are. Uh, still intending to hold digital spring shows or digital spring concerts and those are happening in conjunction with the teacher. And then also, um, the visual art teachers, they are still holding classes through their Zoom meetings. And, uh, you know, providing lessons and artistic opportunities for those kids. Um, they have a social media presence, connecting through Instagram. Um, so those are just some of the ways that the fine arts are still continuing to reach the students and, uh, I'll be here if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. East. Now another big, um, program, our CTE department and Ms. Forte is gonna talk to you all about CTE. And more specifics about the certifications for some of our students.
Hello, everyone, um, so, uh, just kinda as to start this. Um, CTE and all of our teachers are still really focusing on, um, having students participate in projects and. Uh, kind of getting to use stuff that they have at home to, uh, interact and continue to be hands-on. Um, without overwhelming them and, uh, having them participate in, you know, the rest of their classes and things like that. Um, specifically, um, in terms of certifications, we still have quite a few certifications that are still. Um, in the process of happening, um, a lot of those certifications are actually focused around our health science department. Um, so our principals class, we're still doing our OSHA five hour certification. Um, and our OSHA 10 hour certification, we have about 50 students participating in each of those. Um, and we are still currently doing our patient care technician and our pharmacy technician certifications. Um, mostly because all of those certifications can be done online or taken at a separate site. Um, we also have our FIRE and EMT certifications still happening. Um, so we have about 10 students who have already received their FIRE certification. And we have 18 students that are working on their testing for their EMT certification. Um, and we also had 12 students who have already passed, um, their Microsoft Word certification before we went, um. To spring break. Um, so in terms of, um, the rest of our certifications for the rest of our classes. Um, CTE has waived all of our certification requirements. Um, and unfortunately, a lot of our students cannot, um, take certification exams because. Um, they do not have the appropriate software at their homes or on their Chromebooks to take those certifications. Um, however, we are trying to work with students as much as possible to get them whatever certifications they would like to take. Um, and especially our seniors, um, so a lot of our students, we are actually pushing our certifications back into the fall. Um, but if there are any seniors who would really like to take the certification for their CTE class. Um, and they were told they cannot do too software, um, I would encourage you to contact that teacher. Um, and so we can potentially help you as much as possible, um, to either get that software downloaded or find some kind of alternative. For students to take that certification exam.
Thank you, Ms. Forte, and right before we go to our Q and A, Ms. Jackson is our last staff member and she's gonna close us out with adding. Additional information about health professionals and cheer.
Hello, everyone, um, I am Courtney Jackson, I am the CTE Health Science Lead and also the cheer sponsor. Um, I wanted to kind of piggyback on the health science, we have actually had 13 students. That have passed the patient care technician exam. And we are still studying, um, they have their learning, um, study and materials at home. That they will continue to study for, we can take the tests coming up. Um, once the restrictions are lifted, the testing process will be available for those students that have completed this four-year program. Even into the fall or thereafter, um, because they have had that four-year commitment. And as for cheer, um, we are gonna have virtual cheer tryouts, which has been approved, um, with, um, UIL. Um, UCA, which is the University Cheer Association, they're gonna be coordinating that for several schools around the state. Um, speaking to my six returners who will be seniors next year, we're looking at doing those virtual tryouts, May 11th through May 15th. Um, also speaking with my cheer representative for uniform fitting. Which is still, that's kind of in the air of how that's going to work for next year. Um, if there's anyone interested or if they know of anyone that's interested, to please email me, courtney.jackson@AustinISD.org. And I will add them to my cheer remind so that we can get the best cheer team possible for year 2020, 2021.
Awesome, well, LBJ community members that are here with us, uh, that's our presentation, as you can see, we're doing a lot of things, uh, during this time. And I'm very proud of our staff and how we stepped up, uh, to serve our community. Um, I'm gonna ask Ms. Shorter, uh, do we have any Q and A questions that, or Ms. Knauk that we have not answered? So I want to make sure before we close, we answer any other Q and A questions.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bailey, I want to, um. If, if my parents and my community don't understand what FRC mean, that's our Family Resource Center. And then our, uh, CIS is our Communities at School. So I just wanted to clear those up.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, so Ms. Knauk or Ms. Shorter, do we have any Q and A questions that we have not yet answered?
Um, there's just one, um, about, for Coach Fenner, about how, um, sports and also for Mr. East, how sports and other. Kind of close contact activities might look if we still need to practice social distancing in the fall. Um, I don't know if you have any updates on that.
Yeah, so as of right now, uh, everything is still set in stone for the fall, for activities to go as planned. Information arrives, and so once we get that information from UIL, we'll make adjustments and be aligned with the district as well. So right now, fall sports are still as scheduled to take place during. Uh, once we receive notifications, we'll make sure that we update everyone, especially our Jaguar family.
Yeah, I can just, uh, piggyback on Coach Fenner, that, uh, band is still expecting to have summer marching band practice, uh, starting in late July. And if we hear new information, we will keep our, our community updated.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions that we haven't, uh, answered? Ms. Miller, raise her hand, I saw that feature, uh, we have a question from Ms. Miller. I got a couple of participants raising their hand. So those individuals raising their hand, are you able to type your question inside the box? And then Ms. Knauk, can you read out the, can you read the question and then we can answer it?
Yeah, so there's a, um, a question about, is the grading policy according to LBJ or the district? Um, and we are following the district's grading policy that, um, the board approved, um, due to the COVID-19.
Correct, yes, we are definitely aligning our, um, district, our campus policy with grading specifically to the district. Um, and we won't move from that alignment.
Um, there was another question about, um, if students are receiving assignments from the teacher and at-home learning. Is there a preference on what should be completed first? Um, and I guess this would be regarding a passing student.
You wanna take that or I'll take it, Ms. Knauk?
Um, I think, you know, I think we don't wanna, um, interfere with maybe what, what parents are doing in terms of what they want their students to do. Um, at home, but I also feel that there's a, a balance, um, between what the teacher is doing, what the teacher is providing to help them prepare for next year. Um, I would, I would lean on Mr. Bailey to kind of, which, which is the preference. Um, but for me, I think there's some sort of balance, um, knowing that the parent, um, does have a, a role in their child's education.
And I also have to add to that, um, if the child is, uh, fell in the class, then of course that becomes the priority. But if we're talking about specifically of enrichment, um, that's the reason why we put that virtual schedule there. Uh, our students know the bell schedule and what we really did is kind of recreate the bell schedule, condensed it down a little bit, uh, for the students. And they can follow, you know, that sequence of courses. But the reality of it is, um, I have no problem with supporting the parent, working with the student on their courses for enrichment. And the order in which they put that in, um, that's, we're flexible on that piece. I'm just glad to hear that we have increased engagement with teacher, student and parent.
Um, Mr. Bailey, there was a, a question for Ms. Jackson, um, from Ms. Scott, Ms. Barbara Scott. If you'll send Ms. Scott the flyer, Ms. Jackson, she said she can post it on Nextdoor.
Thank you, I will.
Thank you. And Ms. Knauk, you can keep the questions coming.
Okay, um, just another one about, I guess a follow-up about, um, not, not simply enrichment, but core classes and yes, so it would be. When we talk about enrichment, we're talking about, um, extension activities for any course, so it could be a core course, it could be an elective course. So it's extension, um, enrichment activities for any course.
Awesome, so I saw a couple of hand raised and I'm gonna make sure that, uh, those questions, one hand raised was from Ms. Miller. And then I'll see another hand raised from Ms. Vanessa, did we get those questions asked?
Um, Ms. Vanessa just wanted to, um, be, um, emailed about all the senior activities.
Okay, awesome. Any more questions, community, virtual members that are here with us?
Oh, and congratulations on Mr. Bailey being officially our principal today, so yay.
Awesome.
I know we're all very excited to start the, the, finish up this year and start next year.
That's cool, y'all were just clapping, we should do the, uh, LBJ clap, I haven't heard it in so long, staff members, but just teasing.
We totally should do it.
So, uh, community members who are with us, uh, my staff members, uh, a very proud principal of LBJ Early College High School. Even today, um, I miss our students, I felt like I was just getting a chance to connect with the students in January and now I'm, I'm not able to see them. And I know our teachers and staff members feel the same way, uh, students, we hope you're doing well, we're gonna stay connected. Parents, community members, we appreciate your full support and, uh, the work will continue, the ground will not stop. Uh, we are committed to serving the LBJ Early College High School, uh, community. So thank you all, Jaguar strong, Purple Pride, uh, staff members, you are doing an excellent job during this town meeting, it's our first one. And so we'll continue, uh, having these accordingly, uh, take care, have a great evening, thank you all.